Good morning and welcome. We'll come to orders the Board of County Commissioners, December 9th, 2003. If you'll stand for the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Father, we are thankful that you fill our every need and are continually blessing each of us with your love. May we always have compassion for those less fortunate than we are. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one.
The first item on our agenda this morning is approval of the minutes for the meeting held December 2nd, 2003. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? And if not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item two is proclamations and presentations, and we have a very special addition at the head of the item here. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As you know, every quarter, we award the Employee of the Quarter Award. And then at the end of the year, end of our actual fiscal year, which on September 30th, we take those four awards, and we have a committee who chooses the Employee of the Year Award. And on December 4th, the committee met, and at that time, they voted that Jody Bonet should be our Employee of the Year. I just want to read a couple of things about Jody that were written about her. Jody has served St. Lucie County well in the short time she's been employed. Jody's vision for grant writing is not limited to her field especially or her personal interest. She looks at the whole picture and works to find ways to make St. Lucie County a better place to live and raise a family. Here's another one. Through her efforts, the county has received more than $4 million in grant funds. And it just goes on and on and on. Now, what Jody gets for this is she's going to get a nice plaque this morning. In addition to that, she gets a day off with pay, not without pay, but with pay. And she's just, you know, an outstanding employee, as we all know. She does work directly for administration, and I know she works very hard. And if she doesn't have something completed, she stays here late at night or takes it home with her to get it completed on time. So with that, if Jody could come forward, I'd like to present her with a plaque.
I know that the money is only the tip of the iceberg, as was indicated in those comments. Jody is always there when you need a hand. Moving on, 2A on the agenda is a presentation of a check donated by Bev Smith Toyota.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners. My name is Jackie Burgess. Oops, sorry, here. Okay. My name is Jackie Burgess, and I'm the Recycling Manager for the St. Lucie County Baling and Recycling Facility. About one year ago, the idea was conceived to replace the "Don't Teach Your Trash to Swim" ornamental license tag. This was first issued about eight years ago. The idea was to involve all students in St. Lucie County so we could maximize the number of ideas to be submitted. We asked anyone willing to enter to illustrate, depict, or write an environmentally oriented message that would be suitable to transfer onto an ornamental license plate. We then needed to partnership with an environmentally friendly business. That was easy to find because Bev Smith Toyota has won many environmental awards and was eager to partner with us. They provided the prize for the winning entry. I'm happy to say that we received more than 600 entries, making it a challenge to choose a winner. We were looking for an entry that was not one-dimensional, but conveying many environmental issues such as litter, water, wildlife, and waste. We found the concept when we looked at the entry of the winner, Ms. Jessica Harris. Jessica is a 12th grade student who attends Lincoln Park Academy. I'd like to introduce Ms. Jessica Harris, the creator of the winning entry, to unveil the new St. Lucie County ornamental tag. Jessica, please show everyone the new St. Lucie County tag. I don't know if we can share it with everybody here. Okay, after we share this, I think that you can see it also in the television for everyone else. I'd also like to introduce you to Mr. Frank Gonzalez and Liz Ivy of Bev Smith Toyota. And thank you again for your environmental support.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Frank Gonzalez. I'm the General Manager and Vice President of Bev Smith Toyota. I'd like to thank Jessica Burgess and Ron Roberts from St. Lucie County Recycling Division for giving myself and Bev Smith Toyota the opportunity to sponsor the Tagline Contest. We have recycled for quite a few years at Bev Smith Toyota, and when we heard of this contest, we felt honored to be included in such an important subject. I know a lot of work from many students in St. Lucie County has been put into this contest, and I am certain that it was difficult to choose one from so many choices. I understand that there are quite a number of excellent drawings made, however, there can only be one winner. I am glad to be able to share in the excitement of announcing the winner and to be able to present Jessica Harris with a check for $2,500.
I would like to say thank you to the St. Lucie County Solid Waste Division for offering this opportunity, and to Bev Smith Toyota for sponsoring the event. I'm very appreciative and privileged to receive this honor. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say that there are tags right there in the box for anyone on their way out wishes to take one.
Thank you all very much. Moving on, we have another presentation. I understand Jackie will be right back up with Ken Jowelli. And here he comes.
My name is Ken Jowelli. I'm with the University of Florida St. Lucie County Cooperative Extension Office, and I'm here today to tell you about the new monofilament line recycling program here in St. Lucie County. The University of Florida St. Lucie County Cooperative Extension Office, in conjunction with the county's solid waste and recycling department, are implementing a new recycling program that focuses on removing used monofilament fishing line from the environment. Broken or improperly discarded monofilament fishing line accounts for many tragic wildlife deaths due to entanglement. Birds face prolonged death from starvation by having the line wrapped around their beaks or necks. When their wings or legs are tangled, it hinders or removes their ability to fly, search for food, and avoid predators. Manatees, turtles, alligators, and other wildlife suffer from loss of limbs from line entanglement and even death from gangrenous infection or ingestion of the line. Scientists estimate that this line will remain in the environment for over 600 years before breaking down. One solution to this problem is to establish a monofilament line recycling program. Jackie Burgess, our Recycling Coordinator, Leroy Cresswell, our Sea Grant Agent, and myself are working together to establish this program throughout St. Lucie County. Monofilament line can be recycled through the county's regular, or cannot be recycled through the county's regular curbside recycling program because it is made of a special high-density plastic. Special recycling containers for monofilament line will be made available to boaters and fishermen to discard their used line. St. Lucie County will be placing these recycling containers at locations throughout the county. Our first recycling container was installed at the Black Pearl Boat Ramp in Fort Pierce on December 4th. Our plans are to place additional recycling containers at locations such as the Manatee Center, Fort Pierce Marina, South Jetty, Stan Blum Park, and other locations throughout St. Lucie County. Each monofilament line recycling station costs approximately $50 to construct. This program is financed by donors, will be financed by donors such as the Florida Inland Navigation District. These recycling containers will be monitored on a regular basis by county staff and volunteers. Monofilament line in these containers will be cleaned of all organic debris and metal fishing hooks and sinkers. The line will then be shipped at no charge to St. Lucie County in 40-pound increments to a monofilament line processor in Iowa. It will then be melted and processed into other plastic products such as tackle boxes, spools for line, or other products. It is not made into other monofilament line. If you or the county residents are interested in receiving more information about the program, they can contact either myself or Leroy Cresswell at the County Extension Office at 462-1660, or Jackie Burgess at the County Recycling Department at 462-5678, or Lynette Tribalsi, our Public Information Officer, at 462-1791. And Jackie has an example of one of our monofilament line recycling stations. And fishermen and other residents can just put the line right in the recycling tube, and once a month or so, we'll go and pull it all out the bottom, and then we'll ship it. So if you have any questions, any questions, my pleasure. Okay, thank you.
Don't see too many questions. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the reading of the announcements by our County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two meeting changes for the month of December. The December 16th Board of County Commissioners meeting has been changed to 6:00 PM. The December 23rd Board of County Commissioners meeting has been canceled due to the holiday. Meeting changes for January. The January 20th Board of County Commissioners meeting has also been changed to 6:00 PM. The Board of County Commissioners will hold a workshop on January 15th, 2004, at 1:30 PM in Conference Room 3 to discuss transportation issues with the Reserve. I have two additional announcements, Madam Chair. Last week, we stated that the North County Sherret was going to be held in January. We've had to push that to February 7th through February 13th, 2004, with a primary public input session of the Sherret occurring on Saturday, February 7th, at 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. The public's also invited to a presentation of the Sherret Report on Friday, February 13th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And I'll be getting out, the county will be getting out the location of the Sherret, but we just wanted to get it on everyone's calendar that it is going to take place on February 7th through the 13th, with important dates of February 7th and the 13th. And we'll, like I said, get out where it's going to be held. The last announcement I have, Madam Chair, is that, just to remind everyone, that today is the City of Fort Pierce elections. It's the runoff for a mayor and a city commission seat. And just announcing to tell everyone in the City of Fort Pierce to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Moving on to item 2D, we have a resolution, Resolution Number 03-171. Madam Secretary, could you please read the resolution for us?
Resolution Number 03-171, a resolution naming the property described in Exhibit A of this resolution and incorporated herein as Weldon B. Lewis Park, in memory of his outstanding service as county administrator for St. Lucie County for 21 years, having held that position longer than any other county administrator in the state of Florida. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Mr. Weldon B. Lewis was born on December 8th, 1924, in West Palm Beach, Florida. He was a decorated U.S. Army veteran of World War II and a recipient of the Purple Heart and Brown Star, having served in the European Theater 78th Infantry Division. On September 12th, 1948, Mr. Weldon B. Lewis married Jane Carrollton, and three sons were born from that union, and two grandchildren and three great-grandsons. In 1968, Mr. Lewis became St. Lucie County's Administrator and held that position for 21 years when he retired on May 13th, 1989. Due to 21 years of untiring dedication by Mr. Weldon B. Lewis to the citizens of St. Lucie County as county administrator, this board believes that Mr. Lewis should be honored and remembered in a special way. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida. This board does hereby name the property described in Exhibit A of this resolution and incorporated herein as Weldon B. Lewis Park, in memory of his outstanding service as county administrator for St. Lucie County for 21 years, having held that position longer than any other county administrator in the state of Florida. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be presented to Mrs. Weldon B. Lewis as a token of this board's appreciation and gratitude for her husband's commitment not only as a recognized and respected county administrator, but also as a great gentleman and friend to so many.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The resolution passes. I understand Mrs. Lewis is here to receive it, please.
Thank you so much for honoring Weldon in this way. He would really appreciate it, and all the family does. I've been sitting here reminiscing about watching this room and the building be built and being here at the first meeting held in these chambers, and it's been nice to be here with you. And thank you so much for honoring him in this way. The family appreciates it. I do. Thanks.
Next item on our agenda this morning is general public comment. If there are any members of the public present that wish to address the board, you can come forward at this time, please.
Good morning. My name is Arlene Goodman, and I live in White City. And I came to ask you a request to approve the resolution, and you just did that. So I'm here to say thank you very much. As a property owner, very close to this park, my husband and I both are very pleased and will be proud to know that the Weldon Lewis Park is very close to us. I worked here during a time when Mr. Lewis was our administrator, and he was an excellent man. He was a kind man. And when you said the word gentleman, the first thought comes to my mind is Mr. Lewis. And I thank you so much for honoring this gentleman in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Is there any other member of the public present wishes to address the board? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. This is a collection of items that are generally non-controversial, a lot of them in the nature of housekeeping, but any of these items can be pulled for separate discussion by members of the board. Are there any items that members wish to pull forward for individual voter concession or discussion, please?
Madam Chairman, on C4A, which is a Savannah Club DRI satisfaction, I just want to note on the agenda top page, it mentions that this payment could be located on Hutchinson Island in St. Lucie County, south of the FPNL Power Plant, or in Martin County. I would like to note that that specifically came off of there. In the back on the resolution, it says the money's going to be going towards Dolman Park. I'd like the agenda item to also read that.
Thank you. Is there any other items that we wish to bring forward? If not, we're going to entertain a motion on the agenda. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The Consent Agenda passes. Moving on to our public hearings, which are very numerous today. Ms. Patrick?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Becky Patrick, MSBU Coordinator. One of the funding methods available for municipal service benefit units is through non-ad valorem special assessments levied on properties within an MSBU and collected using the uniform method pursuant to Chapter 197 Florida statutes. In order to preserve this funding option, it is necessary for the board to adopt resolutions for each of the proposed MSBU projects at a duly advertised public hearing held prior to January 1 of each calendar year. The resolutions do not obligate the county to levy the assessments; they simply preserve the county's option to use the uniform method of collection if a special assessment is levied. Other public hearings are held to create the MSBU's and to levy the assessments. The resolutions you have before you satisfy the legal requirements necessary for preserving this funding option. Madam Chair, it's my understanding that we will need to open and close each agenda item separately. Therefore, we would suggest that persons wishing to address each particular project to please wait until that item has been opened for discussion. Therefore, staff recommends that the board adopt the resolutions which state the county's intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem special assessments which may be levied by each corresponding MSBU if an assessment is levied within the year of 2004. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Before we begin with the public hearing process on each of these, are there any general questions or comments from the board? If not, we'll move on. First item is Resolution 03-287 Airport Industrial Park MSBU. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address the board on this item? Seeing no one, we'll come back to the board for a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-288 Atlantic Beach Boulevard MSBU. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board for a motion, please.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to Resolution 03-289, which is the Coral Street MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address the board on this item? Seeing no one present, we'll return to the board for a motion, please.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-290 Echo Street MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-291 From Our Place MSBU. We'll open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address the board on this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-292 Green Acres MSBU. We will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item, Resolution Number 03-293 is Gray Twig Lane MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Resolution Number 03-294, which is Harmony Heights MSBU. We'll open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-295 Indian River Estates. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-296 is the Lake Drive MSBU. We'll open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-297 is the Lebanon Road MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-298 Navajo Avenue South MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-299 North Leonard Road 1 MSBU. We will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-300 North Leonard Road 2 MSBU. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? If not, we will close the public hearing and return to the board.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-301 North Leonard Road 3 MSBU. We'll open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution Number 03-302 The Osceola Drive MSBU. We will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is Resolution Number 03-303 The Sager Avenue MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board. Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number 03-304 The Salida Circle MSBU. We'll open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number 03-305 is South 26th Street MSBU. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 03-306 -- I'm beginning to feel like I'm doing a tongue twister arrangement here, but that's okay. Resolution number 03-306 South Hutchinson Island. We will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number 03-307 St. Lucie Village MSBU. We will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number 03-308 Sunland Gardens MSBU. We will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution number 03-309 Sunland Gardens Phase 2 MSBU. We will open a public hearing. Are there any members of the public present that wish to address this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and return to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this concludes the public hearings for the day. Thank you. Moving on to item six, which is the airport. I see Mr. Phillips has come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. Paul Phillips, Airport Director, for the record. This agenda item is a recap of the airport workshop presentation that was presented to the board in November, where the Indian River Community College presented the 2003 Economic Development Strategic Plan that they developed over the course of the year. As you may recall, last year, in 2002, the end of 2002, the board approved the proposal from Indian River Community College to prepare this, an update to the 1998 Business and Marketing Plan. It was to identify revenue basis, increase and diversify those revenues with the mission of financial independence. Indian River Community College developed this, a committee of community leaders that acted as the steering committee, and they developed and approved the plan. We have, in the audience today, members of the folks that worked on the plan. I'd like to thank them very much. Marsha Thompson was the Indian River Community College lead. Jack Burns was the facilitator from Indian River Community College. Ken Stevens from the college was the researcher. And Amy Cryak helped us out late. She is with the Business and Professional Development Center. So if there's any technical questions with the plan, they are here to prepare to answer any. If not, we are requesting approval of the 2003 Economic Development Strategic Plan, developed by Indian River Community College.
I would just like to mention at this point in time that we did have a workshop when this was presented to us, and we thank you all very much for everything that went into this. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this point?
Madam Chair, and I just have a comment. Mr. Phillips, do we have a projected calendar, if you will, as far as when we're going to address some of these strengths and weaknesses that were brought up in the plan?
I believe our intention was to make it through today and obviously gain adoption and approval by the Board of County Commissioners. And at that point, we can put together something that would actually prepare a timeline for improvements. That's correct. We can do that.
Okay. Well, I would just like to see that done, because there's a lot of good points throughout the entire plan, and I just don't want to see it sit on a shelf and not be addressed.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could follow up on that discussion. I too want to thank the participants for their time and expertise. I think the overall plan is excellent. A few of the recommendations, though, we haven't hashed out. We haven't gone through and discussed whether we are going to hire additional staff. So I want to just have a better understanding of what this approval constitutes. I mean, is this basically a guideline for us to follow? Or is it intended to be a policy that every issue that's recommended, we're giving you direction to move forward on?
What I believe it is, is an intent and a guideline for the airport to follow. Obviously, any of the budgetary issues will go through Administrator Anderson and then ultimately to the board through the budget process.
Okay. Again, I think the vast majority of these are excellent suggestions, but a few of them need to be further discussed by this board and consideration of our existing staff and some of those issues. So as long as it's clear what exactly we're doing today, I'll move approval. Unless there was a motion already on?
No, not yet. We have a motion in a second now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I too, just as a sidelight here, had kind of viewed this as just accepting the proposal, but we obviously do need to go through it item by item. So I think Commissioner Hutchinson's idea that we get a timeline set up was a very good one. Moving on to item 7A. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, 7A, B, and D are all related to the same issue, which is the purchase of computers and computer equipment. Item 7A actually relates to purchase of computer equipment for fiscal year 03-04. This would actually be what I would describe as ancillary equipment related to the PCs and the laptops that would normally be thought of when you talk about computers. Madam Chair, this, the items are listed in Exhibit A. It's my understanding that they were presented to the board during the budget process. We are proposing to purchase those from Howard, who is our vendor. We have a four-year contract with them, which I think has been progressing in a positive way, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Were there any questions or comments from the board on this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Chair, can we approve, or maybe Mr. McIntyre can answer this 7A, B, and D all at one time?
You could, Madam Chair. And I think that's an excellent idea. Let me then go ahead and describe if that's what the board desires, B and D, just briefly for the record. Item B actually is the computers that we would normally think of, the PCs and the laptops. There is a third-year contract with Howard. Again, that provides for purchase and refresh of existing computers. There's an interlocal agreement with the state attorney. We are providing computers to the state attorney. They are paying for them. There's also an interlocal agreement with the 19th Judicial Circuit. Again, this is a positive thing for our, speaks well for our information technology department, but we are providing computers to the judicial system as well. They are paying for it. We have, they recognize the quality that we have in that department. Also, there is a Howard PC plan, fiscal year 03-04, which sort of summarizes all of those purchased, both the board's purchase, the state attorney, and the 19th Judicial Circuit. The total amount of that is $340,039.48. We are financing that, as to further described in item D, which is a resolution that would authorize the financing of that through a lease with SunTrust Bank. We have done this the prior two years. The resolution's been prepared by the county's bond council. It does not pledge ad valorem taxes. These will be paid for through non-ad valorem revenues, through the state attorney's office, and through the court system. Staff recommends approval of items 7A, 7B, and 7D.
Thank you. As has been indicated, we will entertain A, B, and D as one item. Were there any questions or comments on any of those items? If not, ready to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So we will, somewhere in the middle, if there was item 7C, which deals with utility service area with Fort Pierce and FPUA. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to start off on this. There's really, I look at this as a two-part presentation. We have an agreement to present, and I will handle that. There's also some maps that we are going to discuss, and Mr. Murphy will lead that discussion, although there will be other staff members that will assist him in that. Madam Chair, as the board is aware, the board met with the city commissioners from the city of Fort Pierce and the governing board of the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority several weeks ago in a conflict mediation session to discuss a resolution of the service area disputes that we've been involved in with those two entities. At that meeting, the city staff and the UA staff presented a form of an interlocal agreement with a map for discussion purposes. We have looked at both of those documents and have some suggested revisions. We've tried to discuss this issue individually with the board members to try to get a sense of where we want to be as far as the interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement that we're suggesting that you consider and discuss is different from the interlocal agreement that was presented by the city and the Utilities Authority. And it's different in this significant way. The interlocal that was presented had a lot of language concerning annexation. It had words that would encourage annexation. It discussed annexation in detail. The interlocal agreement that we have suggested to you does not have annexation as an issue. It does not encourage annexation or discourage it. It doesn't indicate that the board supports annexation. It's simply a service area agreement. It would, it's intended solely to identify through a map that we'll be discussing in a few minutes, what service areas the Utilities Authority will serve and we will not, and what areas outside that service area that we will be buying bulk water and sewer from the Utilities Authority. There also is attached to the interlocal, a bulk agreement that we have previously distributed to the Utilities Authority, so that there would be no further need to negotiate a bulk agreement. We have, we've put that in the, as an exhibit to the agreement, because if we're, we want to settle this, we want it to be a comprehensive settlement with as few issues remaining as possible. Madam Chair, that is a quick summary of the agreement. Again, it's intended to be solely a service area agreement, not to address the issue of annexation either in a positive or negative way. It's intended to incorporate a bulk agreement, and as a component of that, it does reference the service areas, which of course are not included in the agreement, which would be an attachment. Madam Chair, Mr. Murphy has developed, I think, a series of maps. I think the first map is the map that the city of Fort Pierce and the Utilities Authority presented to the board on the November 24th at the mediation session. And that identifies the service area that they would like to see. As the board will recall, they took out the airport. They took out Indian River Estates, and they, those areas are to be reserved for further So the other areas that they've identified are identified in green. The gray area is identified as the city limit, the current city limits as we understand it in the city of Fort Pierce. South of Midway Road, there's also a gray area. That's the city of Fort St. Lucie city limits, just for orientation purposes. This does not involve the city of Fort St. Lucie, but we felt it was appropriate to identify their city limit boundaries. Mr. Murphy, I don't know if you have any further comments on this particular map?
No, you pretty much summarized what's on there. I'm sorry, Dan, it's one of the things that's on there, and it's a little difficult to see. If you see these references right here, they're mostly found here within the city of Fort Pierce and throughout the surrounding areas and here. Those are the existing water and sewer lines for the UA.
There is a second map. This is generated by county staff. Actually, the second, two maps have been generated by county staff for discussion purposes. Again, that, what we've tried to do is take the city's map, the UA's map, and superimpose some areas identified in red as areas that we, we think perhaps should come out of the service area. Of course, the board would have to discuss that. On the bottom right part of that, the South Hutchinson Island, it's our recollection that as part of the 201 service transfers, which we don't believe were territorial agreements, the city does, but even having stated that, the South Hutchinson Island service area was supposed to be transferred to the county. We are currently serving that area with sewer, and so we think that that area should be really part of the county. Even though the UA has the water, we think that should be transferred over to the county on a bulk basis. There are other areas along Indian River Drive in that area that we believe are most appropriately inside the county service area. There's an area on the bottom left corner, southwest corner, if you would, that incorporates the existing landfill and the Tropicana Plant, which I believe Tropicana is served by the city of Fort St. Lucie. It was served at one time by St. Lucie County Utilities when we owned the system. But when we transferred the system, we transferred that agreement to the city, and they are serving that. Also, there's the county landfill in that area. We do have a Leach Eight Line that the UA has, but we believe that's appropriate to be excluded from their service area. To the north, on the northwest corner, those, and Mr. Murphy, perhaps since you were responsible for this, perhaps you can explain the reasoning behind the two northern exclusions?
Yes, Mr. McIntyre. Let's go to the northeast first. This is a little bit easier. During the workshop discussion, there was some, with the city of Fort Pierce, there was some question raised by city council members as to why there was a service line or a service area extending north of St. Lucie Village. It doesn't really show on this map, but right here where the cursor is moving now, that is St. Lucie Village. And it was suggested that they terminate their service line at the north limits of St. Lucie Village. So that would take out that one piece of property up there. From the city service area, it would still be eligible for county service under bulk agreement. The other area that we made a modification to was this area over here in the northwest corner. When looking at this map, and when looking at all of our service boundary maps, and all of our maps in general, for whatever the project is, we try to use clearly identifiable, easy-to-read geographic features. What we've attempted to do here is use as a clearly defined boundary, the C-25 Canal, which would be right here, and then we've used King's Highway from just north of St. Lucie Boulevard down to the King's Highway Industrial Park as a clear identifiable feature. In short, if you're on one side of the road, you know you're going to have FPUA service. If you're on the other side of the road, you know you're going to have St. Lucie County service. That's the only purpose for doing that one. These are, of course, subject to negotiation, and there may be some play into it, but the objective is to have clear definable boundaries. This represents what we think is a reasonable compromise approach for some things, as we've been discussed in the past. And the board has any questions? Dan, you want to do the next one? You want me to do it? Why don't you do the next one? Now, the next proposal is a more aggressive view of the prior one. You'll see the same basic areas that were mentioned on South Hutchinson Island are recommended for exclusion, Indian River Drive, the landfill, and up in the area north of St. Lucie Village. There have been, however, a couple of expanded areas that I'm going to go into briefly. One, this particular area in the northwest corner, instead of using King's Highway and C-25 Canal as the boundary line, uses Keene Road and Canal Number 1, and then C-25. And then what it does is, is simply, or essentially, limits those properties with frontage onto King's Highway as being within the FPUA service area, and those properties lying west of that would be within the county-proposed service area.[1738.44] that would be within the county proposed service area. The dark areas that are shown here, here, and here represent public properties. This is the USDA school board property, University of Florida property, just west of the Highlight Fronton along King's Highway. This is the jail right here, and this is the large rest area along I-95. You can see there's a sizable chunk of this area that is in public ownership and public use. The other area that we proposed under this alternative scenario for deletion from the reserve service area for Fort Pierce would be the White City area south of Midway Road. Basically, what we'd be doing is we'd be establishing a clear defined boundary of Midway Road as being the southerly limits of the essentially exclusive service area for FPUA. These areas still would potentially receive water and sewer service, but it would be done by the county through bulk agreement with either the city of Fort Pierce or the city of Port St. Lucie, more than likely in this case, Fort Pierce, since they already have some lines in those areas. This particular proposal here, I said, is slightly more aggressive than the other one because this actually proposes to have line transfers. The prior proposal did not contemplate line transfers. Dan, that pretty much, I think, summarizes it unless there's questions from the board.
Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Under the proposed plan that Fort Pierce submitted, does that eliminate any, you talked about further discussions in reference to airport, Indian River Estates. That does not resolve the legal questions of the proposal?
What, with regard to Indian River Estates, there is a provision in the interlocal agreement that the city and the UA will not litigate the Indian River Estates issue. But it does not resolve, it does not resolve the airport issue, it does not resolve the pending annexation disputes that we have going on. It wasn't, it wasn't intended to resolve those issues. Those issues would be continued either through litigation, or we'd have to have a separate resolution of those. It's intended just to be a service area resolution.
And their proposal includes the landfill and Tropicana?
It does. As, as the map that Mr. Murphy has on the screen, you'll notice in the corner there where he's got the light on it, that does, as they've included, the landfill and Tropicana. Now, they do, as I indicated, serve the landfill with a leachate line, but we feel, given that, that it's a landfill, it's not going to generate any tax revenues, that really it should be properly excluded from their service area. And I believe we're getting, I don't know if Leo's here or left, but I think we're getting water from Port St. Lucie.
I think that I would be, like to see all the issues resolved before we give them a defined service area. I mean, they're going to be throwing this back at us, saying, well, you all agreed to this service area, and we haven't resolved the airport issue or the landfill and Tropicana area. I don't want Fort Pierce coming in and telling Port St. Lucie, we're going to take these lines now, after we've let them in there. How would we address that?
Well, we'd have to go back to the drawing board, basically, and develop a more comprehensive resolution. This was proposed, and I understand your issues, and I think, you know, and I understand fully what you're talking about, because once we enter into this agreement, I'm not sure what the incentive is for them to resolve those other issues. But the intent of this was to try to develop an agreement that would allow the UA to sell us bulk water and sewer outside the service area, which would benefit them substantially. But it would also benefit the county residents that would be getting water and sewer service, because as I understand it, they sell it cheaper than the alternatives that we have currently. So we're, we were trying to work something out now, because we're at a decision point right now, where if we don't do this, then we're going to be spending money to expand plants, enter into agreements with either Port St. Lucie or Indian River County to buy alternate water. We have to do something to provide for the utility needs in those areas. And we were trying to work something out that would allow the UA to provide us with that bulk water and sewer. That was the thinking behind the, and of course, they were, they were proposing it really as an alternative as well. But I understand your position that you'd like a comprehensive settlement.
Madam Chair. Commissioner Brun, could you clarify the second issue? I understand fully the airport. What was the second issue you were concerned would not be resolved by this action?
Well, the Indian River Estates, the airport, and the Tropicana and landfill, if that becomes part of their service area, can Port Pierce say, Port St. Lucie, we're going to take over those lines? Since you're in our service area? And another question is...
Can we pick one? I thought the Indian River Estates issue was dealt with in this map, as well as the documentation, that it pulls it out and also prevents them from further legal action.
Right. And we can certainly beef that up if we need to, to make it clear, but yes, that was the intention, to try to make sure that we wouldn't enter into this agreement and then get sued by the UA on Indian River Estates.
And then the next issue was Tropicana, and that one I understand and agree with staff, and I believe your concern as well. And was there any other?
And the airport. I wanted to see if we could resolve all the issues before we, I mean, I don't have a big problem with their, their map, with what they want as a service area. I just, if we're going to do it once, let's get it all wrapped up with the issues at one time.
Well, as much as I agree with your optimism, I'm hesitant to hold the bulk water component up in order for us to reach that global accord, which I don't think is going to happen in a timely fashion. And I don't think the airport's resolved, but at the same time, I don't think that we've forfeited it either, because they still have to, in my opinion, meet state laws pertaining to annexation as they move northward, and they do not have compactness or contiguous properties. So it's identified in the map as potential area within the service area, but from an annexation standpoint, they're still not contiguous. So that issue remains on the table for us to discuss and hopefully find a follow-up resolution with the city of Fort Pierce. But I think we need to have this initial step dealing with the bulk water agreement and the generalized service area so that we can reach that win-win agreement for water and sewer service in the North County.
I think a lot of what you're addressing, Commissioner Brun, has been taken care of with the new interlocal agreement. The previous one indicated that we were to support and encourage annexation and what have you within these areas, aside from the fact that we've changed the map somewhat. No agreement does not indicate that. It is purely a service area agreement, has nothing to do with an annexation area agreement. And while I agree with you that we need to resolve, and it would be nice to do it in one fell swoop, I also agree with Commissioner Coward in that we need to move forward and do something with regard to bulk water. Getting to that point has been difficult because of the city's position that you need to sign an annexation agreement. They have felt that they could not sell us bulk water without the agreement, as that would validate their previous agreements. That's their legal position. They have got around that by determining if they specify a service area outside of that area, they can certainly sell us bulk water, which is something I thought was very desirable. Beyond that, going to the third area, the third map, rather, is there any particular area, any particular reason, Mr. Murphy, that the public facilities were outlined in black, other than just to show us where they were?
They were highlighted basically to show where they were and what the potential impacts of making an adjustment, as we've done under this scenario, would be relative to the potential loss of revenue properties for the city. They're essentially, if they're public properties, there's no revenue to be gained from them.
Revenue neutral for their, from their point of view.
Revenue neutral, revenue negative, depending upon your point of view.
Madam Chair. Yes. To go a little bit further on the option two map on the black, and I want to start down with the White City area, right next to Indian River Estates, that's in orange or red, I don't know how you're classifying that color, Dennis. Even though Fort Pierce presently has lines running into that area off of Citrus and Oleander, as you can see, there's just pockets of them, they're not through the entire area, I would feel more comfortable with a bulk agreement. Reason being, you've got a straight line that delineates where the agreement is, which is much easier than to explain to someone who's going to serve where. The other reason being, I'm really not comfortable coming in here and taking bits and pieces of the White City area and chopping it, some into Port St. Lucie, some into counties, some then into the city of Fort Pierce. And from what I've heard of the residents in that area, they're not too happy with that idea.
I had a question relating to that area also, and can I ask Mr. McIntyre a question real quick while we, while we're on this topic, this area? There are already lines there. Do you know if those properties have already signed annexation agreements? I would assume so.
If they have service, they would, if they would have to have signed agreements. They possibly could have run lines past houses that don't have service, but in order to connect, they require you to sign an annexation agreement.
Well, I remember this question came up first in, say, 1995, perhaps. What kind of an agreement was made that allowed them to go ahead and extend their lines at that time? Do you recall?
I don't believe there was any agreement. We do not have, in my opinion, and the city disputes this, to be fair about this, but we do not have an existing territorial or service agreement that would give territories, because the city basically did not want to do that at that time. The 201 resolution that they referenced specifically says in the last paragraph, it's not intended to be territorial agreement. So we don't have one. I think what's happened is, once the county got out of the utility business by selling or transferring the utility to Port St. Lucie, the line of Midway Road became a line of demarcation. I know that the city of Port St. Lucie and the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority have had disputes back and forth about who's responsible for that, but I'm not aware of any agreement on the part of the county to allow either side to go north or south of the line. I think that's just happened that way.
I wasn't specifically referring to the county. It was either the county or the city of Port St. Lucie, and I did not remember what the agreement was, if there was one, that allowed those lines to extend that way. I guess there was none, it was just allowed to happen.
That's been my understanding, is that there never was an agreement. They took it upon themselves to put the lines down, either through MSBUs or just running lines themselves, with no contact with the county. And I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong on that. The other reason on that particular one that I had concerns were to, if you go back to the original map, where the city's showing, and that's all in green up there, then we, by, within the Indian River Estates area, we then start creating the possibility of an enclave.
Right.
So, I mean, then going against the very thing that we've been saying no, no, no to, to either city. I agree with Commissioner Brun's comments on the landfill. I have no, I can't even fathom why they would want the landfill. That makes, they don't even use our landfill. They go to Kechobi. As far as the black areas on the third map, those, again, are all public areas. That is along the area that this county, in conjunction with the state, has worked very hard on creating a research and development park through there. So I don't understand why the city would want to annex that in there, or why they would even want to annex our jail at some point. Those, again, those agreements that we have with them presently, they will still continue to serve, but it would be done under a bulk agreement, which actually, my understanding, they actually make more money that way than the way they're presently being served.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I could, to continue on what Commissioner Hutchinson is saying, the black area up there where the USDA is, as you know, we may be acquiring additional land up there. We're in the process of now, having, well, we are having discussions with the property owners. So that area could possibly grow and come under county ownership.
And then again, if you go back, if I can follow up on that comment, if you go back to the previous statement that was made, my staff, and all of our redistricting, and all of our things, the clearer those lines are, when you've got something you can show people, you can tell people, and there's a very clear understanding of where the lines become, then you see that King's Highway basically becomes the dividing, the ending mark.
Madam Chair, just to go...
And that doesn't go past where they're, I'm sorry, Commissioner, that doesn't go past where they're presently located, if you go down the Kechobi Road corridor. That's where they stop. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to jump in on the discussion and broaden it slightly, because the line that I think is probably very important as a part of this discussion is the urban service boundary. And the urban service boundary is denoted on this map with that black dotted line. And I guess it's a philosophical question that you, that you have got to answer that relates to this question, is obviously municipal services should occur within that urban boundary over time, and whether it should be the municipality, in this case, Fort Pierce and the Utility Authority, that should provide those municipal services, or whether the county commission should be stepping in to do that. And I think there's a side of me that believes that it really should be the city of Fort Pierce and the Utility Authority that should be providing those municipal services in this region. And I'm having a difficult time understanding why we would want to carve out that western area that's inside the urban service boundary, and if we exclude them, presumably we have some plan to go in there and provide services almost in a competitive fashion, and I don't think that's really in our best interest. So I don't have a problem with this western area being identified as their future service area. Acknowledging the contiguity and compactness issue of annexation over time still needs to be resolved, but I don't think it's appropriate for the county to be thinking about providing utilities on the fringe of a city that's already expanding their utilities and ultimately should build out into that area.
Well, the concept here is that this would allow them to sell us bulk water, which would be their utility, certainly.
Right, but if we...
Back to the necessity.
Right, but the specific conversation we're having at this moment is the red areas would be carved out from their service area, meaning that there would be an area outside of their service area within the urban service boundary that needed utility provided. And if it's not in their service area, that leads to the belief that an alternative utility would be provided by presumably us, and that's the issue that I'm getting at. I think this area belongs in their long-term service area.
Commissioner Hutchinson, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Well, as I recall, Commissioner Coward, and this is, again, just a comment, what's happened on the south end of the county is, the city does not have to honor an urban boundary line anyway.
Well...
So what's to prevent them from moving the city out, all the way out, such as we say, Port St. Lucie's looking at doing?
Well, it's a related but different issue. It's relevant, if you look at the map on the south end, you see exactly that, is that the urban service boundary has no meaning whatsoever in the city of Port St. Lucie. Port St. Lucie has tossed our comprehensive plan and our smart growth efforts out the window, and it basically cut deals with individual property owners to extend that urban development westward, and that is a completely different issue. And that was why my very first question was, does the service area itself exist with inside the urban service boundary? And the answer is yes. They're trying to provide, the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority and the city are talking about providing utilities within a county-wide established urban service boundary. They're not proposing to go beyond that. So I feel they are working with us cooperatively in that broader sense, whereas if you look to the, to the south, that's not occurring at all. And that doesn't mean that they could try and move that line in the future, but what's before us right now is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Sort of an agreement, I don't want to limit Fort Pierce's ability to expand either by, in these red zones, because it is inside the open service boundary, and if they meet the requirements of annexation, they should be able to go outside that box. Is that what you're saying, Commissioner Coward, that we're trying to restrict them?
Yeah, in this particular, it doesn't make sense to me why we would restrict them.
Yeah.
You know, some of the other issues on the table, I agree largely with the discussion at hand, and I'm a little troubled, but the issues seem to be three major ones. The first one is the bulk water agreement, which is really the priority issue right now, because we have a lot of development coming online in the North County that needs utility service. The Utility Authority, to my knowledge, has invested substantial capital and has the capacity in place now. So it's a perfect win-win situation for the county, who has the customers, to work with the city of Fort Pierce and the UA, who needs the customers. It helps, you know, spread those costs to a wider customer base, and it benefits Fort Pierce as well as unincorporated counties, certainly a win-win situation. So if there was some way for us to deal with the bulk water agreement without having to get into steps two and three, which is defining the exact service area, which has so many ramifications, whether it's the airport, residents in White City, and then, of course, the biggest issue of all of annexation, and we've been able to try and take that one off the board. But originally, I was hoping we could actually do a bulk water agreement that didn't require us to have every single line drawn to perfection, because I'm a little afraid that we're never going to get that service area finalized in time for us to get the bulk water agreement. I'm afraid that we're going to try, you know, valiantly to get this agreement reached, but because we're squabbling over this line or that line, the bigger issue, the bulk water goes with it, and hence, we've got to either expand our own facility in the North County or go to, you know, Indian River or wherever. So I'm just a little bit wary that we're trying to do too much with these individual lines, and, you know, they're very important. I'm not trying to suggest they're not, I just, I really think the bulk water agreement is the key issue right now.
Commissioner Coward, I would agree with you, but my understanding, we've had that on, offered to them, and it was the city, the one that came to us with a map.
Right.
It wasn't initiated by the county. So...
Once again, maybe Mr. McIntyre can correct me, I am wrong, but as I understand their legal position from their attorney, they feel they need to have this service area defined before they can proceed with bulk water agreements, because they feel if they sell us bulk water... if they sell us bulk water without the defined service area, all their previous annexation agreements are invalidated.
Right.
Now, that's their legal position, I'm not prepared to discuss whether that's correct or not, but that's where they are, which is why they refuse to discuss bulk without the service area being defined.
Right, and if I can just add one last comment, the discussions I had with city representatives, actually UA, my suggestion to them was that we identify a bulk water agreement that is outside of the furthest boundaries of their service area. And we can provide utilities to the development in the North County that is completely outside the furthest service boundary area they've ever defined on any map, legitimate or not. And if there was a way to at least say, south of here, we've still got to figure out the service area, but north, it never intended to be your service area anyway. So, do a bulk water agreement with us in these remote areas outside of your service area, and then step two, we'll come in and define the service area. Step three, we'll figure out an annexation policy that we can work with. And maybe that's just too optimistic, it's not going to happen, but that is what I had hoped we could, we could accomplish, because I'm afraid this is going to get bogged down and ultimately die on the vine here.
Their legal position is that they cannot do a bulk water agreement without a defined service area. That's what we've been coming up against, and something you just mentioned kind of illustrates another issue we've had. There is FPUA, and there is Fort Pierce. And unfortunately, you've got to deal with both, and it gets very confusing sometimes trying to figure out who's speaking at the moment and whether that agreement can be taken at face value. I know my discussions with FPUA, they certainly are agreeable to sell bulk water, they need to sell bulk water, they have, well, they need to sell water, period. They have built capacity into their plants. If they don't sell that water, they're going to have a problem. But then you get to the legal issue, where they feel they cannot sell us bulk without this agreement. So, we're trying valiantly to get service area, but as you have indicated, I'm beginning to feel it's a little bit optimistic, but we'll keep trying. It's the nature of the beast.
Madam Chair, well, is it to the point where we need to pick which map we can, three of us can agree to, agree with?
Madam Chair, before you get that answered, can we put option four? We don't have to agree to any map, my understanding is.
That's what we were going to say.
Well, I mean-
We can try to go back on a bulk agreement, but as Commissioner Lewis said, unless their, their legal position changes or their policymakers decide to change their legal position, which there is an election going on, so that, you never know, we can, we can go back and try a bulk agreement again, if that's the Board's desire. That is an option that the Board has.
Mr., Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I think we have gone, meaning the county, has, have gone over and beyond to try to work with FPUA and the city on this issue. And it has been months, and every time a new idea comes up, we ask again to sit back and look at it and talk with them. And it's to the point that I think the county needs to go ahead and make a move, and in light of, if you want to take it back again one more time with the new, with an election coming, getting, what's over today, I believe. I'm almost to the point, let the county go ahead and make their decision as far as if we're going to buy bulk or not. We have given every opportunity to the city to come to the table. And I just keep seeing constant things thrown back at us, consider this, consider this, but yet, we've got Indian River County, we've got Fort St. Lucie waiting, we have our own master plan waiting.
Madam Chair, I, I think that Fort Pierce has submitted a map to us, hopefully in good faith, and I think that we ought to counter with what we think is appropriate, and that would, that may be option one, and let them look at it and see if we can work something. It's obvious, we keep sending staff back with no real direction, and they come back with nothing we can work with. So, I think we should send them back something as, you know, one of these options.
Had this, I'm sorry, have we finished? Had option, well, our option one, for better, better nomenclature, had, what, had we presented that to them when we had our conflict resolution meeting? So, no, they had not seen that?
No, this, this map was developed, I mean, the map that's on the screen was developed after the conflict resolution meeting. It was developed really by staff, based on discussions among, among the staff.
Okay, well, just to add further confusion to the issue, I personally like that option, except for the White City below Midway Road. I too would like to exempt that, because this has just been pointed out, we're creating a pocket if we, if we approve that, or we're facilitating the creation of a pocket, put it that way. Does anyone else have a favorite map?
No, I think it, option one, making the White City area red to exclude it.
So, that's our option one with White City area added to the red.
Yes, I'm in it.
Yes. Any other comments or suggestions on this issue?
Madam Chair, I'll go in the minority, I'm going with option two. I see no reason to go past the King's Highway area other than selling in bulk. And that's not to say we wouldn't service those areas within the boundary line, it gives a very clean-cut line as to where the service goes, whether it be FPUAs or the counties. They can still service those areas within the urban boundary through there, but it was done through bulk agreement, very similar to what you're looking at doing at White City.
I hesitate on that largely because there are areas that are already carved out. If you look at that map, we're not, we're looking at the other one right now, but the map that you're referencing, there are some areas, there, there are some areas to the left of the highway there that are already served by Fort Pierce, in fact, enough of them that I think, well, it just seems to me that-
It's not a good dividing. Mr. Murphy, are, are they presently serving there, or that's where they propose to go there? I know they've got lines there on the, but those lines look to be all on the east side of King's Highway.
No, they're servicing there. They're, they've got, they've kicked that-
What's on that corner then, on sixty, on Orange Avenue and King's Highway, other than the Flying J?
Flying J is right here where the little red dot is. There's nothing on the other corners, they're vacant at the moment.
That's, I'm asking, what are they serving? Nothing?
At the moment, nothing.
Okay.
But there is a water line that runs right here, which comes down to the jail.
Yeah, that was to service the jail, again, a public piece of property.
And it comes down to the USDA Center.
Thank you.
But you have a problem, can't cross those lines once they exist, so I think there is, there is presumably a precedent set for the service in that area.
Madam Chair, also, the comment was made that we need a clear line, and I think the western line on the map was the, was the turnpike. So, I mean, there is a clear alternative that's as clear as King's Highway, but in this case recognizes lines that are in the ground. And back to my earlier comments, if municipal services are going to be provided there, it makes sense that the municipality is the one who serves it. So, again, a key issue that's not included in this is how the annexation takes place within that service area. So, I'm hopeful that we can follow this initial agreement up, if it happens, with more discussion on that annexation policy.
Madam Chair, just for the record, this is strictly for a bulk water agreement. It doesn't even touch on the issue of the annexation, am I correct? Right. So, I mean, that then, if the city is going to acknowledge this as being an area that they propose to annex, then the whole thing changes, in my opinion.
No, well, yes and no. It's how they annex, not whether they annex. I think the service area says their intention over build-out, whatever that may be, fifty years may, their intention long-term may be to annex it, but I think the issue that we're not including in this initial discussion is how that annexation occurs within this box. And that's the issue I'm saying still needs to be discussed, there still needs to be consistency with the state law dealing with compactness and contiguity. So, it's not just running out of road, but they've actually got to do it in a compact fashion as they spread out.
To deal with this particular issue, we've got to go back, I think, to the original agreement, which they presented us, which stated that they would, we were required to encourage annexation within the service area. We have taken that out. Whether they will even accept it minus that requirement is, is up for grabs right now, I think. Quite honestly, given the discussion we had a few weeks ago, it seemed to me very unlikely that they would accept that, but I'm willing to ask. But once again, we are making this a service agreement, they included annexation in their Which I guess muddies matters still further, but that's the way it was. So, once again, the interlocal agreement before us does not mention annexation, the original interlo, interlocal agreement did. So, I don't mean to put us back to square one, but we need to be, you know, remember that we are just presenting this, this is not necessarily something that will go to the wire, this is just something we are presenting for the city's approval, it's subject to further counteroffers. But we need to do something here.
But she'll get a consensus.
Does anyone attempt, want to attempt to sum this up, is what I was about to ask?
Yeah. You want me to try to do that, or?
Can I just go? What have you heard? Perhaps if you tell us what you've heard, sorry. Before we even get to the other issue, I would, in regards to your comment, Commissioner Lewis, on this may take us back to square one, I would like to see this Board give us, or direction to the staff that in the event that this does take us back to square one, that they need to go ahead and bring back to this Board the master plan proposals that the county has, whether it be the bulk agreements. I think there were some issues that we, as far as expansion on the North County plant, that we had put off in hopes that we would come to an agreement. I would like to see this brought back like ASAP if this goes, stalls. I'm not going to wait.
Well, I think that's necessary, we've got customers that need service as far as that goes.
Yes, and that, that would be understanding as well. We promised we'd get this back to them before the fifth, their meeting on the fifteenth, and we'll be able to achieve that if, if the Board gives us some direction. But we would, we would put in the letter that Mr. Anderson sends, that we would, we want a response by the, I guess, by the end of the year, you know, within a timely manner, so that we have some direction as to whether we're going to go forward or not. Madam Chair, in terms of summary, the, the interlocal itself provides for, it's a service area agreement, it's not intended to implicate annexation in a positive or negative way. It cross-references maps, we've discussed the Fort Pierce map, the, what we call option one map, and, and an option two map. What I heard the Board talk about with regard to the option, option one map, was the area south of Midway Road that's currently outlined in green would be outlined in red. And I heard that, that there was, seemed to be a consensus on that. I didn't, I wasn't aware of any further changes to option one. There was some discussion in the northwest corner by one or two Commissioners about putting that, keeping that green, but I didn't, I didn't hear three Commissioners say that. So, I'm assuming, you know, absent further discussion, that the, from what I heard, that there was a consensus on the option one with the exclusion of the White City parcel below Midway Road.
I think that's a pretty fair summation, at least it's what Mr. McIntyre heard, and I agree with it. Is there any further comment or question on that? Does anyone want to move forward with a motion at this time, or do we need to do that? Well, yes, we do, because we have a, an agreement before us.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll? No, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Being on from item C, we have handled D also, we will move on to eight, which is draft resolution zero three dash two thirty.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Hank Flores of County Staff, this agenda item is the petition of Greg Wexler through Agent Henry Kay for major site plan approval for the seventy-seven unit residential project known as Key West Bay, located on ten acres of property on the south side of Wetherby Road between Southwest One and Oleander Avenue. On October twenty-eighth, two thousand and three, the Board of County Commissioners reviewed the application for major site plan approval, and instructed staff to meet with the developer to determine what changes to the plan could be made in order to better preserve and minimize development impacts to existing vegetation. Staff met with the applicant and discussed several ways in which the developer could lessen these impacts and provide a better vegetative barrier to the property to the south. The applicant provided a revised site plan and landscape mitigation plan, which have incorporated changes such as the relocation of the roadway and buildings to increase the buffer along Ancient Oaks Park and lessen the impacts of the development on existing trees. Staff has reviewed the request for major site plan approval, determined that it's consistent with the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, and is therefore recommending approval of draft resolution zero three two three zero, which grant major site plan approval, subject to twelve limiting conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Did you wish to make some comments, or?
Well, I guess, under these circumstances, maybe less is better, but there is a handout which will show you the major changes that this developer made throughout the process. And I have present our engineer, the developer, as well as our environmental consultant to assist you in any questions that you might have regarding this plan. We believe that it's going to provide a wonderful neighborhood for, for, you know, for reasonable living, rental units, in an environmentally sound community that retains much of the old Florida nature that's in that area. I do have our environmental consultant and would like to just, to assist the Commission.
And perhaps, I don't know, can you get this map up on there? And if you would look, there's a handout as well, looks to number four on the handout, which is the color images, and Mr. Sapotnick will explain to you what we've done here with the central area of this community.
Chris Sapotnick with Environmental Services, environmental consultant for the applicant. And what you have there is a rendering of the site plan, shows the preserve area within the central portion of the property, shows the ponds and dry retention there as well, and shows the overall green area that would be incorporated within this site plan. As Mr. Kay indicated, we went through a couple iterations, there was a progression of plans that we had worked from. You have a packet or a handout that shows the, the first site plan, where there was a reduction from the seventy-seven, a reduction from a hundred and five units, I believe, to seventy-seven units total. The second site plan that did not include the area that has the, the roadway to the bottom down there. And then this final one that you have before you right now, that shows that we shifted that up to comply with meetings that we had with county staff. And part of that was to provide a buffer to the Ancient Oaks Park and a potential trail in the future, once plans are better refined on the park system. So, we're just looking into the future and what we can do to help, help out in that area. One last thing that I'd like to show you in regards to preserve versus tree protection, we've worked diligently with county staff with the trees out there and tree protection that's required. We went, we did a tree inventory within the preserve area to show what would be preserved and saved on the property. And there's a, one photo that has showed that shows an example of what I'd like to just touch on just briefly. The last photo that you have in your package has just an example of what we're trying to accomplish on the property. Photo to the left is proposed, proposed preserve area. We've, have a nice preserve out there, it will be maintained by the applicant, it'll be monitored, and it will be brought down. A lot of the underbrush will be brought in to check, any exotics, which there aren't very many, in the preserve area, will be taken out. What I just wanted to show an example of is, is what's allowable by, by the county, and that's, that's the photo to the right there, where we're going, what I'd like to say is above and beyond what's required for this, this particular area. In, in a pine-flat wood situation, we're going to provide a habitat that will be useful for wildlife, as well as just preserving some trees on site. And, and that's really what I'd like to, or my point in, in that photo is just to show that even though you may preserve trees or, or provide some tree protection, the habitat's what's very important and what is a, a good mix that we're tying into this project as well. If there's any questions?
Thank you. I was going to say, were there any questions or comments from the Board at this point?
Madam Chair, just a comment, I want to just thank the developer and his team for working with the county to make some modifications that were significant, and I think have significant results that are beneficial to the environment, I think the adjacent park and the quality of life in, in this area. So, thank you for working with us, and with that said, I would move approval.
said, I would move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, all of you, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, we have nine A, Art in Public Places Proposed Annual Plan. Mr. Ward, good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, I'm John Ward, Executive Director of the Cultural Affairs Council. In nineteen ninety-nine, as we're all familiar, the county passed an Art in Public Places Ordinance, which sets aside a percentage of our capital construction projects in a trust fund for art in public places, and we've allowed that to grow for a couple of years now, and as you've recently seen, we're starting to exercise projects now and execute the construction side of the Art in Public Places program. Recently, in October, many of you attended the dedication for the Monumental Sailfish sculpture in Fort Pierce, which has gotten great reaction from the public, and we are currently about fifty percent at completion for the Marine Center sculpture, we anticipate dedicating it at the first of January, so we're, we're real excited about that. As part of our Art in Public Places program, we're tasked to present to the board annually a proposed annual plan, which outlines the sorts of projects that we envision for the coming year. And to assist me in that task this morning, I've got Bob Russell, well-known local artist and the chairman of our Art in Public Places Committee, and this plan that you have in your package is as a result of a number of meetings that the committee has had, it's been endorsed by the Cultural Affairs Council, and this morning I'd like for Bob to stand, present it, and answer any salient questions.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Bob Russell, as introduced by John. Some of those projects that John mentioned are the result of the annual plan which you passed in March of two thousand and two. Besides those two ambitious projects, we also have been interested in public outreach, we published the Arts View magazine, which has been very successful, all of the issues except for a handful of them are gone, and we would like to continue what we've done with, with last year's annual plan, which is to make partnerships with the city of Fort Pierce, and eventually the city of Port St. Lucie to share funding for these, for these projects. I can just go through some of the key projects that we're proposing in here. On page three, the first project being the Walton Road County Government Building, this is a site that affords opportunities for both three-dimensional and two-dimensional works of art. There, as you know, there are two proposed courtyards, one facing at the corner of US One and Walton Road, there's another courtyard that's, that faces the parking lot, these would be sites for sculpture, the interior of the building would be an excellent site for, for a mural. We're proposing to spend eighty-four thousand dollars just, just for the artwork. The total for the project, including all the program support and maintenance, is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, of which the county would put up sixty thousand, and we're seeking funding from the city of Port St. Lucie for the other half, although the city of Port, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, can I stop you there now?
Certainly.
Question, has the city of Port St. Lucie passed their Arts in Public Places Ordinance?
I was, I was about to say, they have not passed a public, an Art in Public Places Ordinance as yet. Mr. Ward has been in contact with, with officials there, they are very interested in, in pursuing a formal program such as we are doing.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Anderson, I had a meeting with Mr. Cooper, the city manager, and he's indicated to me verbally that he supports the passage of an Art in Public Places program in Port St. Lucie, and would write a memo to their board, and I look forward to more work in that, but we, we have an idea that we'll be able to get something passed down there this year.
Madam Chair, if I can follow through, I happen to see some discussion by the city council in Port St. Lucie on this topic, and there seemed to be a concern that they would pass the ordinance, and then the money would come to the county and they'd have no control over it. And I think it's important to clarify that it's really intended as a partnership, that the money collected in Port St. Lucie through their ordinance would be under their control, and the concept of partnership would be emphasized, that they would retain control but would work cooperatively with us to try and use both funding sources to do good projects in the city limits, like we've done in Fort Pierce recently, we'd like to emulate that and have that happen in Port St. Lucie. So, if there's any confusion, the, the concept is for them to retain control but work with us in a partnership.
Following through on that, I had spoken to Mr. Ward about this a number of times, I believe Mr. Ward isn't the process that there will be a committee chosen from their city to handle their share of, well, whatever their project might be?
Yes ma'am, Madam Chair, Commissioner, they would certainly participate in all of the process and the selection of these things, the key to be remembered is that when we initially started talking about this in nineteen ninety-nine and ninety-eight, and years prior to that, it was a theoretical discussion, at this juncture, we've got a very practical exercise with the city of Port Pierce in place in which we are doing partnership agreements. The city passed a mirror ordinance themselves, as we are requesting that Port St. Lucie do, they maintain their own funds, when there's a project within the city limits, we are invited to partner on that, the approval for these projects is presented both to you, the Board of County Commissioners, as well then subsequently to the city commissioners for their approval of the project, both in concept and in funding. So, they will always maintain complete and absolute control of their money, there is no commingling of funds whatsoever, and approval of every project is subject to their individual approval, certainly they have the ability to influence that, and members of their community would certainly be involved in the selection process, so it is in the truest sense of the word, a complete partnership, the county would not exercise any undue control over that in the least. All we're offering to them is, in effect, a fifty percent sale on sculpture that we can put in their city, instead of them erecting it themselves, we're offering to partner with them on a cost basis.
Thank you, sorry we interrupted.
No, and I, and I would say that when the city of Fort Pierce was considering what kind of master plan would, would be used as guidelines for how they would administrate the, their own ordinance, that, that was a fear that they had, that, that the money would be commingled, that the county would have some control over what they were doing, which has not been the case. When I was here last, I presented that specific work of art that we recommended for the Marine Center, and within a week I was at City Hall also presenting it to them for, for their Board of Commissioners to approve. So, that, so I think that we're, I think that we're pursuing getting an Art in Public Places program established in, in Port St. Lucie, and as John said, since we've, we're starting to establish a pretty good track record here, it's, it's not theory that we're talking about. The next, the next project that we're proposing is in the city of Fort Pierce, which would be the Avenue D Roundabout. The city and county, I think, have put a lot of money into, into repairing and beautifying Avenue D, there's a roundabout at the corner of Fifteenth Street and Avenue D with, with already, there's a raised wall that contains some landscaping, now it's similar to the, to the roundabout downtown, and we're proposing this as, as a site for a sculpture, with, with matching money from the city of Fort Pierce. On our committee sits Ramon Trias, who's, of course, the Development Director for the city of Fort Pierce, so there is, there's also that communication, so we can discuss projects that we, that the county intends to propose to build in the city with the connection from, from the very beginning of the discussions of it. You might notice that in the, in the text, under these different headings here, I've, we've made some suggestions, you might say, for, for themes of these different sculptures with the provision that, that an artist doesn't necessarily have to follow them. In other words, I've, for instance, for the Avenue D sculpture, I was suggesting, and I've talked to some people in the neighborhood there, and, you know, a lot of people would like to have perhaps a portrayal of historic artistic figures such as Zora Neale Hurston or the, or somehow the Highwayman, or there could be, and then some kind of abstract concept of overcoming adversity or the civil rights struggle, but ultimately it would be something that the artist conceives, that fits into the site, that will be, be chosen for that, of course with, with community input, because we've involved people in, from the community in, in the selection of our, of our first piece of commissioned art. In fact, counting the, my board at the Cultural Affairs Council, and your board, and the city board, there were probably thirty-five people signed off on that project and participated in it. The next project, which is, is on page six, has to do with the, the improvements to Twenty-Fifth Street, and I know that millions of dollars have gone into, into these improvements of Twenty-Fifth Street, which is, you know, the other main north-south connector to the city of Port St. Lucie. In fact, that stretch of St. James between Midway Road and Erosso, is, I think is one of the most beautiful drives that you could hope for in, in the county. And now the, the county is going to finish the improvements between Edwards Road and Midway Road, and we would like to, to install what I'm calling of some kind of linear artistic project, and by that I mean, a project that would be made up of several components linked thematically, perhaps by the same artist, that would be adjacent to the sidewalk and, and bicycle path. I think it's important on a, on a transportation quarter, that there be artwork adjacent to the bicycle paths and pedestrian pathways, because really you need time to slow down and then take a look at, at artwork, and I know just driving to Port St. Lucie for visits, I see lots of people out using those, those adjacent pathways, bicycling and running and just taking walks.
I think the median will also be considered as part of this Project Two Commission.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
Is that going to go, are you looking at the entire length of Twenty-Fifth Street from the US One all the way through Port St. Lucie, or is it just the new section? I'm not hearing.
Primarily, the, the new section would be good, because the, the design of, of the sidewalk could be modified to accommodate the artwork, although it would be very nice to retrofit something to the already improved section further south.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, can we just elaborate on that topic for a moment, because I think when you first start talking about art and transportation, a lot of people probably question how those two mix, but one of the things I think that Mr. Ward explained to me early on in this process is that art comes in many forms, and that it may not necessarily be a sculpture that's along the pathway, but it may actually be the, the art being incorporated into the design itself, and that can come in many different forms, so I just, it's worth just kind of elaborating a little bit on, I don't know if you can add more than that, but.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner, certainly our interpretation of art also includes artistic landscape elements, there are any number of ways that we can incorporate the physical design of the pertinences to the roadway, such as, I've seen a number of decorative, for instance, decorative signage, landscaping, certainly.
Park benches as well.
Right.
So it gets us away from the bland asphalt cement world and tries to incorporate a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Depth and, and art into that, so, I just wanted to clarify, I think there's some confusion when we talk, most people think we're solely putting sculptures throughout the community, I think that's part of, of our plan, but it's really much more than that.
Commissioner, as a matter of fact, a prime example of that kind of thought process is going to come up a couple of items down when we talk about the South Bridge project, and I've got a couple of illustrations for you that can show you, it's a lot more comprehensive than, than certainly just a collection of sculptures. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, it would, it would have been good if we had been able to, to try to approach this maybe earlier in, in the design phases, but the program was just getting started out, and we've, now that we've done our first pilot project, we're proposing this more ambitious plan at the present time, but in a lot of subsequent projects, I would hope that artists would be able to be involved with the, with the architects and the engineers from, from the beginning, for instance, if you need, if, you know, if, if there has to be a, a wall, why not embed art into the wall, or the lighting could be used creatively, or as I said, if you're going to have park benches, make, make something artistic of, an original creation for the, for things like that, as, as well as for the, for the landscaping, which, which I think can, can be an artistic creation as well. I mean, not, not just planting trees, but, but the shape of the contours of the landscaping, if you had to have a retention pond, why not do something interesting and artistic with it? Of course, that might be a difficult problem, because I know usually retention ponds get designed just perfectly to fit right into.
With a chain link fence around it.
Yeah, with a chain link fence. The, the project that John was, was giving you a teaser on is, is Piers on page seven, we are proposing that a light sculpture be built on the, on the South Bridge that runs along Seaway Drive in the city of Fort Pierce, this is another project that we could collaborate with the city of Fort Pierce on. What you're looking at now, thank you Dennis, is, is some existing light sculptures that are in, in the city of Miami, it may be a little difficult to see this because of the, because of the glare on the paper, but with a, with a light sculpture, what you're doing is creating a work of art out of the, the most elemental part of art, which is light, I mean, whether it's, whether it's color or the way shadows are cast, or... What you, what you have with a, with a light sculpture is that you're able to make something extremely huge without any real substance to it, and this is a, a project that, that I think would add a, a very nice component to, to our collection. In the last year, we have established a, a very realistic sailfish sculpture in a, in a traditional medium, and then our commissioned work will be a less traditional and more abstract sculpture made of quartet steel and stainless steel. I think that this medium of, of light will, will, will make a perfect complement to the, to some of the other things that we'll see going up around town. On page eight, there was, there was another idea that we, that we came up with, and that's actually as a result of a contact made to me by a Romanian sculptor with, with an international reputation, Miha Popa, who also goes by the name of Nova, his, his work hangs from, from New York all the way to an international center in, in Beijing. To accommodate works of art which are loaned to us, which, which Mr., which Mr. Nova asked me if, if he could, could possibly do with one of his large sculptures, we're proposing that a number of plinths and bases for sculpture be installed at strategic places in the county to accommodate these, and as part of the program, we would seek out other sculptors who might be willing to, to install their, their work here, whom we would of course pay the transportation and, and an honorarium for the, for the sculpture, these things would, would probably be in place for at least a year or two years, in some cases, we may even wish to, to eventually buy the, the works of art.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Let me just interject, we don't often have the luxury of having Mr. Ward and Mr. Russell here to share your ideas and the groups that you're working with, so I think it's an excellent discussion, and it's creating a lot of thought as you're presenting. You had mentioned this idea of bringing works of art in, in a loan process, and obviously that's very common in a lot of the major museums, and I would very much like to see that happen. You had mentioned strategic places, and that's where I wanted to go with my questioning, is do we actually have those strategic places to bring the artwork in? Can you just elaborate a little bit on the topic?
We've, we've discussed a couple of different places, there, there are parks around town, there, I know certainly in, in Fort Pierce, some sites for sculpture have actually been designed into the, the, into the cityscape there. There's also, we There's also, we talked a little bit to Kathleen Frederick, who's the director of the Bacchus Gallery. They're making plans for an expansion of the gallery, which might include a sculpture park. And we might install one of our plinths perhaps there.
That probably leads us back to our earlier discussion about the city of Port St. Lucie. I know that they have had discussions about a cultural center of some sort, either occurring in the Riverwalk project area or possibly in their Village Green redevelopment area. But this is, I think, an example of where we may try and look at a potential partnership with them, because obviously it's going to be a substantial undertaking, and we've partnered with Fort Pierce on various culturally related projects. So I would hope that we can begin or continue with those discussions and see if there's some way that we could work with them to accomplish that.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner, certainly that's one of our goals for the year, is to put to bed the Art in Public Places ordinance down there and establish a firm working partnership with them and their development department, as we have in Fort Pierce. And one of the concepts about this, the proposal for these plinths and pedestals around is literally a widespread sculptural garden. We've been approached by a number of folks that have, there are a number of sculptors that have large-scale works, and they really don't have any place to put them until they're physically sold or commissioned by someone. So this gives us an ideal situation in which we can leverage our dollars, literally by creating, in effect, we're buying a frame and we're having the painting loaned to us. And it'll give us a rotating collection of pieces. In doing this, it's also an educational outreach program for the art, because it gives us the ability to try a lot of different styles and things without physically investing taxpayer dollars in them. It's sort of an exhibit as opposed to an ownership capability. But that's, it's certainly one of the key elements in our program. And to close our presentation, I wanted to note that presently, we're holding a little over $201,000 in our Art in Public Places budget. We're projected to have $211,000 contributed in this coming year, and that'll give us a budget of around, balance of around $412,000, $413,000. So we'll have about $150,000 over and above the proposals that Bob's presenting this morning. So we've certainly got the money to do it, and we'd like to move ahead much more aggressively than we had in the past.
Just one final question. A lot of the discussion so far has talked about outside displays, you know, pedestals and parks and things of that nature. And what I was really getting at beyond that was the concept of a cultural center of some sort being built in Port St. Lucie, either in the Riverwalk project or in their city center and in the Village Green area. And I would like to just get some more information about whether that goal has been refined by the city of Port St. Lucie. Do they have a specific location? Do they have their arms around that project at this point, that they can begin to sit down with us and see if there's ways that we can provide financial assistance, whether it's through impact fee dollars or TDC dollars or whatever it may be? But I would very much like to see us explore some type of a financial partnership to look into a cultural center of some sort in Port St. Lucie.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner, you'll recall that in January of this year, when I was tasked to present a five-year program for these kinds of cultural assets, one of the assets I mentioned was a major art museum in which we had an educational component, where our local constituency could take art lessons, and we could have major shows come in. We've had the conversation with, again, the city of Port St. Lucie, and they do, Don Cooper in particular embraces this theory of a balanced menu of cultural assets, including, for instance, the Sunrise Theater for our Performing Arts is a major venue for the county, and something located in the south end of the county, in their city limits, is a major site for the visual arts. I think we've started to have, we're starting to reach consensus on it, but we haven't gotten to the point where we're identifying sites yet. Although I will say, there are a number of groups down there that have been pushing for various sites for a couple of years. I mean, some like the city center location, there's been some Riverwalk conversation. I've met with all of these groups and continue to do so. And we just need to come to the point where we've got a consensus, both in the concept and then physicality of where we want to go with the piece. But from a concept standpoint, I think there's agreement, and certainly something we want to accomplish.
Very good, thank you.
I think that once the city of Port St. Lucie establishes its own formal Art in Public Places program, it'll be truly historic. It was very historic that the city of Fort Pierce passed their ordinance within a week after the time this body passed the ordinance. I know, for instance, Palm Beach County passed an Art in Public Places ordinance in 1978, and it was only a couple of years ago that West Palm Beach passed a similar ordinance. So I think that it would be truly historic if we had a county with all three main municipalities establishing Art in Public Places programs and working together on these projects.
Thanks, Bob.
I'm looking forward to it.
Unless there are any other questions, that'll conclude our presentation, and we'd certainly like your approval to execute the plan.
Thank you very much. At this point, it will come back to the board, and if there are no further questions or comments of Mr. Russell, we are recommended to approve the proposed program. Move through.
Second. Madam Chair, under discussion, just briefly, I want to thank Mr. Russell for the countless hours he puts into this. He's strictly a volunteer, doesn't get paid a penny for this, and has put, as I said, countless hours into this. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Russell.
It has not only been hours, I know for a fact, this has probably been over the last, what, seven or eight years that you've been doing this. So truly, it is a monumental effort, and I'm glad to see it coming to fruition. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved, thank you. Moving on to item nine B, our biweekly committee reports, as is our habit, we will start up here at the end with Mr. Broom.
Law library was canceled for lack of a quorum, and I was supposed to go to the Lake Okochobee Coalition, but I had a family emergency, so I had to miss that. And that's my report.
Commissioner Broom was supposed to take my Lake Okochobee Coalition, I had a conflict of meetings. Value Adjustment Board has not met, Treasure Coast Local Governments was my conflict of meetings. Our speaker had an emergency come up also and was unable to attend as of Monday afternoon. So the board itself basically just had a nice all-around conversation in general, where we would like to go. The one key issue that did come up, and it's in regard to Indian River County, their representatives, both in the counties and the city, would like to come to the table and be a part of the North County Charette, and how that affects them. So I have, as soon as all the information is confirmed as to where and when, it keeps changing from when I spoke at that meeting, that will be all sent down to them. Workforce Development Board has not had a meeting yet. We've been changing our meeting schedules around, trying to accommodate, and there's not a meeting scheduled for this month. Thank you, Commissioner. Howard.
The only meeting I have to report on the committee, and the meeting itself was actually canceled, so I don't have any specific update. I did want to just point out one issue that was worthwhile, and that was the Rural Land Symposium that was sponsored by the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, which I thought did an excellent job of bringing in some very knowledgeable speakers from across the country, and also a very diverse cross-section of the community, who attended, staff and elected officials and developers and agriculturalists. And I thought there was some excellent discussion about the future of this region, and particularly what to do with some of the western areas. We heard a presentation from the consultant who did the Collier County Model, which has basically been the example that many folks have been looking at. I think it may be worthwhile to get some information, some more detailed information from the Collier County Model back to this board. We may consider bringing that individual in. But the reason I bring this issue up is, one of the agriculturalists spoke about the need to better connect the urban area with the agricultural area, and I think that's one of the more resounding thoughts that has stuck with me. He specifically talked about some of the waste issues that we're currently grappling with from the urban area, where we're talking about doing a bio solids project in the region, and then trying to find markets outside the region to sell. And they're currently buying that same nutrient product from out of state. He's basically acknowledging that there's a disconnect between what they're doing from an agricultural standpoint and what's happening within the urban area, and that we need to cross that line and start to bridge those gaps. So I just wanted to raise that issue for the board to think about as well. It certainly was, I think, a very pertinent comment on his behalf, and I hope that we can begin to try and do that, specifically as it relates to this bio solids facility that we're moving forward with. So again, I didn't have any specific committee meeting, but that particular symposium was very worthwhile. I think Commissioner Hutchinson was able to make the afternoon portion?
No, I wasn't.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But I ended up with meetings up here at the office that day. I do, while I do have the mic, I would like to add that I did attend the noise abatement workshop, that the MEA group has, and I stood in for Commissioner Barnes yesterday. And Lance Haven Smith had given a very brief study, I guess you would call it, on what the future looks like for the four county area, especially Saint Lucie County, with projected population growth, what type of population is coming here and so forth. And I have asked Mr. Anderson to get in touch with him, and I think our strategic planning is at the end of January, and asked Mr. Smith if he would be available to come in. That information is going to be pertinent to how this county grows in the future. So even though it's still in the early stage of, his talk was, there's a lot of questions that were fired out, he hadn't gotten all of the information together, he's still pulling it in. But the figures alone were mind-boggling. So I would like staff to move forward with that for January.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, you raised another interesting topic about the strategic planning efforts, and I had noted, my observation ever, after sitting up here for five years and participating in those strategic planning sessions, is that those are largely driven by staff, which does a tremendous job preparing information and then presenting it to us. And I think it's an important forum, it updates us on details about existing projects as well as needed future projects. But the area that is missing, I think, is the informal discussion among the elected body that's, you know, in a position to set policy and try and look towards the future for this community. And there doesn't seem to be an opportunity for this board to sit down and informally discuss ideas that aren't on the agenda already or being discussed by staff, but just a free discussion amongst this board in an informal session, looking out to the future. And I'd like to see that kind of discussion occur, if at all possible. And right now, I think it does, to some degree, at the end of meetings or if issues crop up, but there doesn't seem to be an opportunity for us to regularly just sit down and say, this isn't on the agenda now, but I really feel like we should be looking at this, you know, the research and development concept, or, you know, issues that are bigger than just the day-to-day agenda items that are making their way through the process.
Commissioner Howard, I couldn't agree more with you, because, you know, had I not been at that meeting yesterday, I mean, immediately it was like, oh, man, we've got to start planning for all these people. And he had it broken down into the age groups that are looking, that he sees coming here to Saint Lucie County. And in some way, shape, or form, we've got to be addressing those issues before they come here. I mean, he was very complimentary to Saint Lucie County as a whole for where we've been back in the early 90s to where we are today. I don't know, at the strategic planning one in January, if we can do the late afternoon, after getting all the staff information and so forth, and just do the informal conversations. I would love to do that.
I'm very open as to when and how we do it. I just wanted to throw that thought out, because I do think it's something that we could benefit from.
That's certainly a thought. Committee reports from my end here, Chamber of Commerce, as an ex officio member, we are currently restricted in our participation. Council on Aging, I was not able to attend their meeting, because I attended the Florida Association of Counties Legislative Policy Committee meetings. A few comments on that. I think they've got a good platform put together to take to the legislature this year. I would like to mention specifically that Saint Lucie County, Mr. Anderson had brought forward to them a request to support our issue. As everyone knows, we've discussed it at great length on this board, the fact that we are having really heavy medical costs from the jail. And it has come to our attention that a lot of counties, or a number of counties anyway, are able to get Medicaid rates on their prisoners. It's kind of unfair for us, because if someone comes in off the street to the hospital with no medical coverage, it's up for grabs whether they will even get Medicaid rates. However, once they are arrested, they do not only get Medicaid, they certainly get the same level of care, but they not only, the hospital not only gets Medicaid rate, they get 60% of their retail rate, for want of a better terminology. I'm sure that's not what it's called. But anyway, we have put forward through the association, and it will be supported statewide, that the counties may get Medicaid rates on prisoners' medical care. Whether this will happen or not remains to be seen, but it is something they will support for us. And on other items, we, it's kind of interesting, just thought I'd like to mention that the Rural Caucus for years has been, I think there were seven counties that participated. The association has recently seen the need to open that up, because, like us, a lot of other counties in the state are urbanizing. So now when you go to an urban caucus meeting, there are all kinds of counties there, and as is usual, it kind of alters your perspective when you hear the new issues they have, or just something, sometimes something we've been dealing with for a long time, or sometimes something they've been dealing with for a long time that we haven't encountered yet. But it's very useful, and I think the legislative process this year should be interesting, for want of a better term. And as Commissioner Hutchinson mentioned, the Value Adjustment Board has not met lately. We do have an additions agenda, two items, RA1, Port St. Lucie annexations. Mr. Anderson, or Mr. McIntyre, or Mr. Murphy, who's presenting, it doesn't say.
I think I'm going to start this, and then I'll look over to Mr. Anderson and Mr. McIntyre for some additional information. You have in your package, Commissioners, some information that we received, basically through calling the newspapers, of the public hearing notice for the upcoming second annexation hearing for the proposed Port St. Lucie wastewater treatment plant. This annexation issue has, of course, been of some interest to the county commission and the residents of the area for some time. And basically, what we're here to ask today from you all is direction as to whether or not you wish the county to proceed in through or partake in any sort of conflict resolution issue relative to this annexation. And we've highlighted a couple of things in our memorandum to you relative to the annexation property itself. For the record, it's located at the south end of McCarty Road, southwest of the Pony Pine subdivision, and it is adjacent to the city of Port St. Lucie LTC Ranch Development or Regional Impact. Property, I believe, is owned by the city of Port St. Lucie, and as we have discussed in the past, is the proposed site for a regional wastewater treatment plant. By itself, this particular annexation probably is not in violation of the annexation practices and the annexation requirements of Chapter 171. However, as the board is aware, there are other annexation issues pending out there that have not yet reached this particular stage, and that when you look at them in a larger perspective, this annexation, in combination with the others, may constitute some violation of the statutes relative to the creation of pockets and enclaves. At this particular point in time, staff requests direction from the board as to how you would like us to proceed in this matter, if at all, and what we want to go and do from there. And I don't know if Dan has anything additional he wants to add in this one or not.
Madam Chair, as the board's aware, on any annexation dispute, what the options are is that certainly we can look at this and decide that it's not appropriate to really get involved in any formal way. And particularly, as Mr. Murphy indicated, when you look at this particular annexation from a standalone basis, it does not appear to violate any of the applicable statutory criteria, that being contiguity, compactness. It doesn't appear to be winding in a serpentine way or creating pockets or enclaves. The only issue would be is if you look at it with regard to other potential annexations, then there, again, there is a potential argument, and again, I think that would be, to be honest, an uphill battle, a potential argument about creating a pocket or an enclave with regard to the reserve area. But those are, that's the only issue that I can see that would be even, from a legal perspective, be appropriate. If you decide you want to take some further action, the action would be to... If you decide you want to take some further action, the action would be to adopt a resolution initiating the conflict resolution process. That would then go to the city. It would require that we have an initial meeting with the city staff to attempt to resolve the issue. Ultimately, there would be a joint meeting between the county and the city boards, and then potentially mediation after that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I ask a question of staff? As I recall, we had actually paid for and did a study at the possibility of other sites for location of a sewer plant for Port St. Lucie, did we not?
That's correct, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson.
And had we not asked in the past to be a part of, at least be informed of their decision-making in regards to this, so that we can better work with them and also with the citizens in the unincorporated area?
Yes, we made that offer to them.
And I believe we also sat down with the City of Port St. Lucie at a joint meeting and discussed this, and were unable to even get any questions. In fact, part of the reason for their moving ahead with the purchase of the Egan property was based on the fact that they were, had to meet a deadline, but were still open to possible consideration for other sites.
That's our understanding, yes.
And have we heard anything from the City of Port St. Lucie in regard to any of those issues?
No, we have not.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on that line of questioning, most recently, we've had a discussion about the entire 40-plus square miles of new territory that the City of Port St. Lucie was contemplating annexing to their already approximately 80 square miles. And we have been calling on them for many months to move forward with some type of a master plan. We were concerned about piecemeal development projects coming in and not having a coordinated overall master plan that not only was beneficial to coordinate within the city limits, but with all the other service providers that are impacted by this future growth, including this board, the school board, fire district, law enforcement, and on down the list. So after quite some time and a lot of development already being approved, we now understand that the city is going to do a master plan through the Urban Land Institute, and this board specifically made a request to them to have that study include all of the new territory that they anticipated annexing, and to include those service providers, namely us, in that process. And could you give us an update on what the response has been from the City of Port St. Lucie to our request?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Coward, first of all, we have not received a formal response back, and I do not like to speculate, however I will. In this case, my speculation is, is that we will not receive a favorable response to our request.
But your speculation is based on an actual conversation that you had with the city administrator. It was not based on past experience.
That's correct.
It's this direct conversation on this topic. So even at this juncture, and with the magnitude of development being discussed, and the concerns about the impact on the entire county, we're still not getting a favorable response to even be included in the discussions and the planning for this overall territory.
That's correct.
Any further questions or comments? I did have a question that came to my mind as we were, when this was brought to my attention, and I don't think we have an answer for it yet. I would kind of like to ask if they can get back to us. I know we were told that there was a, well, just reading the newspaper articles, basically, I hear there is a timeframe that the city needs to adhere to with regard to the building of the new plant. And I was just wondering if the capacity they require is for existing residents or online residents, so to speak.
Madam Chair, it's my understanding that it's for both. That they plan on tying the service that is now serviced by another plant into the new plant. And then they're also talking about capacity for new construction, so it's both.
Well, I guess why I was concerned with that specifically is, is we are looking, when you're talking wastewater, you are looking at a health and safety issue for residents and Port St. Lucie residents, our county residents as well, so I was concerned about that.
Well, Madam Chair, from day one, I have been very sympathetic and willing to work with Port St. Lucie to address the issues of their safety and health in regards to their plants presently. But at the same time, I would like to see them take the same consideration of the people that live within the unincorporated area.
That's what I was indicating. I was just looking at the fact that we are not going to impact any current residents if we were to enter this process.
If there's nothing else, no other comments, Madam Chair, I would move approval of directing the staff to go ahead and initiate the conflict resolution, and hopefully it will be used to open up some doors instead of closing them.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, what I think, what the effect of that motion would be, is that the board would actually formally adopt the resolution initiating the process and deliver that to the city. In addition, it's my understanding then that Mr. Murphy would attend the city commission meeting on the 15th and formally present county objections to the annexation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
When Port Pierce doesn't annex correctly, I'm the first one to vote to stop it or to litigate it. But, I mean, staff is asking us, this follows the statute, the law. I mean, are we, this meets the requirements of annexation, and there's really not much of an argument I think anybody has. I mean, are we just objecting because they're not contacting us about what they want to do? I mean...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I follow up on that? Commissioner Bruin, my concern is if, today, if you're looking at that one little piece, you're right. It doesn't, it does meet the law, but when you look at the global picture, which is very much out on the street, very much, everyone knows about it, of what's being proposed, it does create problems, and it does create making pockets and enclaves at that point, which then is against the law, the state statutes.
The only issue is that piece of property. These are other speculative properties.
Well, they're in the process, my understanding, they're in the pipeline, and they're working their way through. And, I mean, I would have to be in Australia with my head in the scene not to know that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just like to ask, I think I need a second, just for discussion, so we can continue this.
Thank you.
I'm curious, going back to Commissioner Bruin's concern, which I share, but I have, I'm ambivalent on the issue because it really leads to a follow-up question, which is, what other options do we have? The City of Port St. Lucie has disregarded or is inconsistent with our comprehensive plan, our urban service boundary, our long-range transportation plan, the intergovernmental coordination of our comprehensive plan, our existing development orders. They've excluded us from direct or adequate involvement in their large-scale development projects. They're now going to exclude us from the overall master plan for the 40 square miles. I mean, at what point do we get involved? What other options do we have? I almost feel like they're leaving us with no other option than objecting at the tail end because they're not including us in the process from the outset. So if we don't take this action today, what alternatives do we have? What other options do we have?
There really are limited options, as we, I think the board asked me some months ago to do a point-of-entry memo, and the options really are limited to, with regard to the sewer plant, to the actual permitting process when they actually apply for their DEP permits. I'm not suggesting there's any issue there, but that would be a potential point of entry, or possibly land use and zoning, although it's my understanding that they're going to try to utilize the county zoning categories, which would allow them to potentially approve this as a conditional use.
And can you elaborate on that? In other words, they would actually vote on this topic of an unincorporated piece of property? They would vote to allow for the plant to move forward on an unincorporated piece of property before it's annexed?
They couldn't do that. I think the annexation hearing is next Monday.
Okay.
They would annex it and then rezon it.
Okay, so...
He's in county.
So why, they would rezon it to be consistent with the existing zoning district?
Yes, they would treat it, well, they would rezon it in this sense. They would adopt, they would approve it as a conditional use, which is allowed under our zoning.
Mr. Murphy, is that your understanding of, based on your discussions with city staff?
That's my understanding, is that the city will be annexing this property. It will retain a AG5 zoning designation on it, which is what the county has on to it. And their intent is to pursue, under their ultimate review authority, a condition, the equivalent of our conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a wastewater treatment plant. We allow those kind of facilities as a conditional use in the AG5 zoning district. So they would be mimicking the process that would normally be done by this board, but instead, and I believe the law allows this, and Dan has to correct me if I'm wrong on this one, that they would do it in their capacity as the direct regulatory authority for that property.
And can I just jump in? We allow consideration of, just because it's a conditional use does not mean that automatically gets approved. It means the board has the option to weigh all issues and decide whether it should be approved with specific conditions. And the concern that I have about them taking action is, if you look at this map and where the site is, the site is completely, or largely surrounded by unincorporated county and unincorporated county residents who don't vote and have certainly not gotten adequate concern, their concerns addressed by the City of Port St. Lucie. So by going through the process you just described, the City of Port St. Lucie is able to pass this without caring or taking into consideration virtually all the surrounding residents in that process.
Is that a question or?
Yeah, it's more of a rhetorical statement, but, I mean, that's my concern with them having that authority to, you know, make that decision. So, I mean, if it's left in the hands of the county commission, we've got to take in consideration not only the best interests of Port St. Lucie residents, but also the folks who live immediately adjacent to this area.
Well, I have a comment to make back to the original objection that was raised, that there don't seem to be any legal parameters regarding this. If this comes forward on next Monday, it runs into our next item, which also on their agenda for next Monday are land use changes for those other pieces, the little triangular piece and the little rectangular and square pieces above it, those pieces that Commissioner Hutchinson was referencing. Now, those are going forward with land use changes before they've been annexed, which I'm told this can probably be done, but it kind of puzzles me how that can happen. But the point being that the discussion of the land use changes is taking place at the same time as the annexation discussion. So there is no question in my mind but that this does facilitate the formation of a pocket, of an enclave, if you will. So if they were not taking place concurrently, it might be a little bit harder to see a reason or rationale, but quite honestly, since they'll be taking place on the same agenda, it becomes a lot clearer, I think, that there is a further ramification to the approval, other than the issue which, whether the plant belongs there or not, and whether that's been adequately addressed.
Madam Chair, again, you know, I know there's a motion in a second on the floor, and it's getting close to lunch, and we still have other things to go. As I said earlier, I look at this as being a way to open doors, not close them. And that's, I hope, is the intent of our board in sending the message to Port St. Lucie.
I certainly think this will cause discussion to occur.
Madam Chair.
We have, yes?
I still need a clear answer from the attorney, though, about whether those opportunities for discussion can occur at the other points of entry you described and still have any meaning. If we do not move forward with this item today and instead try and ask for further involvement through the land use change process, does state law provide us with similar venue to discuss these issues, or do we miss out on an opportunity and basically make comments that don't have a lot of meaning?
Well, once the property is annexed, the city then controls, basically, land use and zoning and permitting, other than they would have to obtain permits from the state. But those are, you know, the state permitting is a fairly focused issue, and it just, whether they meet the state criteria or not, it doesn't really come into play about zoning or compatibility or things like that generally. So you're, once they annex the property, your options become much more limited, and they have much more control. I mean, from your perspective, you have, I think, attempted to try to work this out before the property was purchased. You actually spent money on a study that was delivered. So I think we have tried to facilitate meaningful discussion on the location, but for whatever reason, they've decided to go ahead with the purchase, and it appears the development of this property as a regional sewer plant.
If there are no further comments, we do have a motion in a second on the floor. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
I have to say, this is probably one of the most difficult votes I've had to take in five years, and I don't, I have very strong feelings on both sides because I'm concerned about the public safety issues in Port St. Lucie. I am a Port St. Lucie resident, and the last issue that I want to affect is public safety. And I am concerned that this action could potentially have a negative effect on the existing capacities and the problems that the city's already experiencing. And in contrast to that, the fact that the city has completely disregarded any concerns that we've raised throughout this process, they've left us with no other choice than to object at this stage in hopes that we can have some constructive discussion to move forward. So I'm hoping that, from a timing standpoint, we can try and bring them to the table and resolve these issues fairly quickly. And in that light, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion.
Yes, ma'am. Echoing the difficulty factor, yes, ma'am. Moving on to item RA2, same church, different pew. Mr. Murphy?
Same church, different pew, same basic issues as just discussed a moment ago. Madam Chairman, you have in front of you a memo with an attached publication notice regarding 14 proposed land use amendments within the City of Port St. Lucie. The transmittal hearing, which is what I believe is being held on December 15th, is what this announcement is for. Just as a bit of edification, the major comprehensive planning process requires review by a local government's local planning agency, by the local governing body, for a transmittal review, authorizations to the Department of Community Affairs, and then ultimately, an adoption hearing is held after agency and interested parties have had an opportunity to review and comment. As of this date, the county has not received any particular information or detailed information regarding the proposed amendments. While there are 14 amendments on the agenda, only about seven of them have any direct relationship upon the county, and as indicated on the map on the screen, they all affect those red areas in the perimeter of the city. Several of these involve annexation, new annexation issues along the western periphery. One involves an annexation issue within an enclave area along Walton Road and a small annexation area near Savannah Club. County staff at this time is not recommending that the board appear and file any objections at this land use hearing. There are additional opportunities to object to it. What we're asking for authorization to is to formally transmit a letter to the City of Port St. Lucie requesting additional information on all of those plan amendments that may or may not have effect upon county facilities. As the city moves beyond its traditional boundaries, it's going into areas that were not originally part of such things as their master transportation system, their master drainage system, and there generally can be some land use conflicts with what the county comprehensive plan shows for these same areas, that we want to come back in, address and comment on, and hopefully avoid problems in the future. In addition, as we've already outlined in our other discussion, and as some of the board members have noted, taken collectively, some of these proposed annexations may, comprehensive plan amendments and annexations may create additional conflict with Chapter 171 Florida statutes. Excuse me. Again, staff requests the authorization to submit to the City of PSL, informal request for copies of all application materials and supporting analysis associated with these proposed comprehensive plan amendments. Do you have any particular questions? I'll be here to try to answer them.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, we'll also include in that letter that we once again want to be part of the UL, Urban Land Institute study.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can you just point out, staff, please, very quickly, the extent of the territory on the map before us that is within their future annexation plan, to give the public some idea of what we're talking about?
Okay, hopefully this will come through. The gray area represents the existing city limits of Port St. Lucie.
Right. And just point out on here... Right, and just point out, I know, it comes right down like so.
Gatlin Boulevard is here.
That's right.
St. Lucie West is here. This is the reserve. Their proposal, ultimate proposals in their adopted comp plan, call for basically annexing out to Range Line Road, which is right here. It's basically the western edge of where the gray is right now.
Right, and how many miles west of I-95 is that point?
Um, I'm going to say about five or six.
About five miles west of I-95. Okay. If you can just continue, and their idea is to not only go west in the south, in the southern area, but to continue that line north all the way to Midway Road and take in whatever that is, 40 or 42 square miles of virtually all agricultural or low-density residential development. And I understand the area in the southeast, the large red box, which is an economic development corridor. Port St. Lucie, like many local governments, is overly reliant on residential land use and clearly needs to diversify its tax base, create jobs, and I understand what they're trying to accomplish in that southeast corridor with the job and employment concept. I'm at a complete loss of trying to figure out why, in some of these northern areas, they would want to come in with large-scale, single-family home developers from South Florida, such as Lennar and others, to do track home building when they have such an incredible amount of capacity within the existing area where we're already struggling to provide services, whether it's the fact that our kids are going to school in trailers, or we've got hundreds of million dollars of shortfall in roads and so forth. It makes no sense to me why we'd want to sprawl out into the hinterlands here to allow for higher-density track homes. So especially when that development is occurring next to low-density, unincorporated county residents, it just, we need a master plan out here, and we need to have involvement from multiple entities, including the school board and others that are affected by this growth. So, again, it's a plea, we need to have the city willing to work with the other service providers, so that we can try and have a future growth pattern that is good for all of St. Lucie County.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from other board members at this point?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, Mr. Murphy, you're requesting the applications for these properties?
Just basically authorization for a formal request for information, since it doesn't appear to be forthcoming any other way.
And if, if they don't give it to us, do they, before the hearing, do they, do we show up to the hearing and object?
Well, we'll have additional opportunities to object through the comp plan process. It will, of course, go to community affairs. Community affairs will disseminate the information out, but I don't know how much they'll be sending out to us. The city will be sending us some information, but again, I don't know how much information. And basically, this is just an attempt to say, you know, hey, you know, hello, we're here, we may have some concerns with what's going on here, and, you know, we need to talk.
Madam Chairman, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, I think we do.
Motion to ask staff to send a letter of formal request for materials.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 So the letter will be sent. Thank you. Is there anything further from the board, from staff? If not, we'll move into...
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Again, mosquito control, or you want to do erosion?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, we'll come to order as the St. Lucie County Mosquito Control District. First item on the agenda are the minutes from November 25th. Is there any discussion?
No problem.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is general public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the mosquito control board this morning? I guess it's this afternoon by now. Seeing no one, we'll close the general public comment portion of the agenda and return to this board for the consent. Is there any discussion?
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? None? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. We'll come to order St. Lucie County Erosion District. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes of November 18th.
Approval.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Again, there's general public comment. Anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Move approval.
Second?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.